We call the work session for Thursday, February 3rd to order. Welcome to the Palm Room. Let me thank Real Estate Management and all our staff that have been working over the last several months, weeks, whatever, to get this ready for us today. It's nice to be back in downtown Clearwater. It's nice to see the windows and trees outside. And the lesson here is be careful what you jokingly tell Della the name of the room is because she ordains it, puts it in print, and has signs made, and it's in county records now. So, welcome to the Palm Room. With that, Madam Administrator, get us started.
All right. Good morning and welcome to the Palm Room. And if anybody would like a tour, if you hadn't had the opportunity to come here in the last couple of days, we'd love to show you around, so we can do that after. This morning, Commissioners, we have two agenda items. The first one is the website update, Barbara Hernandez, and then our agenda briefing.
And I would ask that, you can hear there's little feedback, so if you're not speaking, to turn off your microphone.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Barbara Hernandez, Communications Department. I'm really excited to be the first presenter here in the Palm Room and talk to you about a project that's very dear to our department. We have been working on it for quite some time, and we wanted to make sure you had an update as we continue and get closer to lunchtime. So, this is our new county website project, and I'm going to start by giving you an overview of where we've been, where we are, and then I'll turn it over to Dan Schuttsmith. He's our Digital Project Manager, and he's going to do a live demo of some of the pages so you can start becoming familiar with what it's starting to look like. So, why are we worried about the website? Why are we talking about the county website? It is our number-one customer service platform at Pinellas County Government. Just last year, over 3 million people hit the county website to get information or to be connected to a service. And so, we know that the site offers a lot of good information, but we also recognize that it's very cluttered. Over the years, we've just continued to add and add and add information, and there really hasn't been a good structure for an end-user experience. The technology is also outdated. We also know that over 50% of the people that are going to the website are doing it from a phone. So, we need to make sure that we're catching up with the times and offering the best experience possible for our residents. So, with that, we set several goals. Number one, we want to make sure that the new website is mobile-responsive. It's mobile-friendly. We want to make it easier for people to find what they came to look for without having to click too much or read through loads of content before they get to what they need. Obviously, streamline the accessibility compliance. While we're at it, refresh the design, and then implement something that's going to be very, very helpful for us as we continue to manage the website into the future, which is a state-of-the-art content management system. Some of you may have heard this referred to as a CMS system in the past, and basically what that means is that we're going to be able to manage how the production happens behind the scenes in a much easier, much more streamlined way that saves us time. One thing I always tell people when I'm talking about the website is this is not just a redesign. We didn't just, you know, sit down and think of, "How might we change the look of our website just because we want to?" This is a very intentional process that uses a lot of research to drive the decisions that we're making. It includes looking at our technology components, looking at our content, and then looking at what is the end-user experience. I'm very excited to share that all throughout this process, we have taken a very inclusive approach. In many agencies, these projects are just assigned to, like, the BTS of the world or the communications team of the world, and they get it done, and then it launches. We wanted to make sure that this is a very thorough process, so we've engaged all of our county departments. We have a lot of liaisons from many of the departments that have worked with us behind the scenes for over a year now to really look at the different department sites, to look at how people are consuming information, and to learn from them. They're the experts of whatever field they're working in. So, we've done that. We've engaged our leadership, our department directors, but more importantly, we went out and we talked to the people that are actually using the website on a daily basis, our users. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about that research. Just to give you a heads-up, the new design that you're going to demo today takes on the look of the refreshed county branding strategy. You'll recall, a few years ago, we talked a little bit about the county logo, the county brand itself. Things that we learned is that we have a very high level of recognition for our brand, that people trust and respect the Pinellas County brand, so we didn't want to change something that was not broken. So, we just took in a refreshed approach, and you have seen it in publications we have been putting out. More recently, you've seen it on the COVID resource site. I'm very excited to share that thanks to the efforts of our team, and I'll introduce them in a minute, we have hit over 7 million views on the COVID resource website. So, we know it works. People have sent in comments and say, "It's easy to find what I'm looking for." So, we have like a tried-and-tested formula as a good basis. Our research consisted of monitoring the traffic, so behind the scenes, we're able to see how people are using our website. The image you see on the slide is actually a heat map. So, behind the scenes, we looked at how people hover over a page, what they click on, and what are like the hotspots on the website. We also have data that tells us what are the pages that people are consuming the most and which pages people are really not really looking at. And so, it helped us inform departments and say, "Well, maybe we need to rethink this page because nobody has visited in two years, and maybe we were spending some time on it." We looked at the user behavior, as I mentioned, and then we also did a survey. We put out a survey, and we asked people to tell us, "What do you think about the website? What works? What doesn't? Give us your ideas." Based on all of that, we came up with two key priorities. The first one, which is really rethinking how we manage a website, is helping users find what they're looking for. In the past, we've been used to just put out information that we think they'll want, we think that they need. The research proved to us what we already kind of knew, which is people go to the website with a purpose. They go with a reason. They don't just happen to land on the Pinellas County website and they, you know, just happen to read about the wonderful X department. They go because they want to get something. So, our task is to remove as many obstacles as possible so that when they get to the website, they get what they want, and off they go. We also learned from others. So, we took some time, talked to some of our peers and other communities throughout the nation, looked at their websites, learned from what worked for them and what did not, and we took all of that in as we developed our new site. So, our approach is to focus primarily on the topics and services that the residents are looking for, more so than departments. So, a citizen might need to access information about fertilizer ordinance, but they maybe don't know that it's Public Works, that's the department they should talk to. So, we're making it easier for them to find that information by focusing on topics and services. We're creating a quick path for you to find what you came to look for, and Dan's going to demo that in a moment. And then we're editing pages, and that has been a very long and thorough process of editing pages and really thinking critically about the content that's on the pages and focusing on what really matters to our users. So, now I will turn it over to Dan Schuttsmith. As I mentioned, he is our Digital Project Manager, and he just so happens to be focused 100% on the website, but there's plenty other projects that we have for him in the pipeline, so he's also excited to complete this. He's going to do the demo, and then he's going to talk about the next steps because obviously, we're not ready to launch because there's an end-user test that needs to happen still. We're going to be beta-testing these pages. So, that's kind of the next step. I'll let him talk about that. But I just want to take a moment to introduce the rest of our team that's here, that has been critical to all of the work we have done, and I'm just so proud of them. Brian Dur, he is our Digital and Audio-Visual Manager in Communications. Brian Zumwalt, who you know as well with BTS. And Sarah Powell, she is our Project Manager on the website as well, and she has also been critical on the content side. So, I'll turn it over to Dan.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Daniel Schuttsmith, Website and Project Manager for Pinellas County Communications. I'm going to be showing you the website, walking through it with my counterpart over there, Sarah, who Barbara just introduced. We're going to show you a few pages today, but content is still evolving, so just be aware, too, that when you're looking at it up here on the projector, it might look a little bit small on some of that text, but I swear to you that if you look at it on your computers or your phone or your tablet, it'll look like a good size. The other thing to note, too, is that on the website, we made it responsive, so everything can be increased in size and actually still look nice, so that's been part of it from the get-go. So, on the homepage here, we first start out with the navigation. So, you'll notice that this navigation is very different from our current navigation. Our current navigation has a lot more going on initially when you look at it, and we found that actually to be a little bit cumbersome and confusing for users. So, what we did was refined it based on the actual analytics and also the user surveys that we were getting from people on what they saw as a benefit to them. Going down the page, we take a look at the Quick Find. The Quick Find is a concept that we put together basically based on what we saw across other places, so like Miami-Dade, Arlington, Virginia, had similar things like that, but we evolved it a little bit, and we'll come back to that as well. We also have the background image there of Fort DeSoto Park. This is just a temporary, so this is swapped out anytime we want to. We're thinking probably periodically, but I don't know if the Communications Department will want to do it that often, but the reality is that we can swap that out to different attractions, even different people that we highlight across the county on there. Scrolling down the page, we come to the County Commission's section. For that, we have the ability to be able to sign up to speak. We have the meeting schedule, and clicking on your photos there actually takes you to the BCC page. On the right, we have the Pinellas County news as well, and this is being dragged from all across the different departments, so it's not just necessarily county news, it's also departmental news that's coming out that people want to see. And we're also looking at, you know, other ways that we can kind of put that in there, but we'll come back to that, too. Let's scroll down. And then we have the Pinellas County Spotlight. For the Spotlight, this is a nice area for us to highlight kind of, you know, big things that are happening around the county. Again, these are just examples that we threw in there for now. These will be updated a lot more frequently, and the concept is that, you know, we could do a video, we could do a photo, we could, you know, make it go to specific pages, whether internal or external. And then going down, we have the Most Requested Services, the Most Visited Links. A big part of that is actually focusing on showing what people have gone to in the past, so for this right here, we're pulling it from the current analytics of the current website, but in the future, it'll actually run automatically. So, through the power of the web, it'll actually show us where people are really going kind of in real time.
So, the Fort DeSoto Campsite's the number-one search? Are they the number-one reason people come?
It's usually in the top five, so it's not always number-one, but it's usually in the top five. That actually, what you see right there as the Most Visited Links is really what it was when I checked last week, so that's really what it was in the last month. Then scrolling down, we have the Visitor Info Section, and so we have links and icons to various partnerships there. That weather's real, so that's real-time weather right there, so if you really wanted to get it every day, you could. And it's also in the navigation at the top. We'll take a look at that in a little bit. And then Events, and this is the first time I think we're really pulling in events from all across the county and from the different departments. So, what we put together is you can actually go in there, you can be able to see the different events that are going on and be able to attend them. And then scrolling down to the end here is the Footer. So, the Footers on every single page that we have across the website. The whole concept of it is that, you know, you're able to contact us with any of the things on that first row you see there. You're also able to report an issue, so that's like going back to our See, Click, Fix application and being able to do that, and you can download it to one of your mobile apps or do it online. And we also have the Live Chat there as well. And if you were to click on the Live Chat, we're not going to do it now, but if you were to click on the Live Chat, it's actually a little bit redesigned, too, and looks a little bit more modern. And then we have links to government offices. So, those are both internal and external. So, we have various departments that are high-traffic, that we see people going to a lot. We also have some external things, like the Sheriff's Office and such is also included in there, and these are the, you know, the most frequent and kind of links that people are coming to look for, so we're making them available all the time. We'll go up, and we'll take a closer look at the Quick Find. I just want to show you kind of the functionality of how it works there. So, in the Quick Find, we choose what we want to do. In this case, I want to pay my utility bill, so I'm going to choose what utility bill. There we go. And then it gives us a button to be able to go to. And so, that takes us to a page to give us more information on that specific thing. The whole concept of it is to make it really quick and easy for someone to be able to work with it, be able to get to the services that they want to be able to get to. We'll take a look at the navigation now, and there's some interesting things to note. So, we've gone ahead, as Barbara said, and put the site into Topics, because what we found is that Topics pull together this content across the departments in a way that the public is used to. The public usually doesn't know the organizational structure that we have internally, and instead, they're thinking in terms like this. And so, that's really how we kind of put all this together, and so all the content across the website, over 4,000 pages, was all tagged in ways so that it could be pulled into these different topic areas, basically, and we'll take a look at that in just a little bit. Services, so it's showing our most popular services here that people go to. Again, this will be real-time. For now, we're just pulling out the ones that we're seeing that are the most frequent on the current site. For Business, we have various links to different business information, but we also have, over on the left side, is Visit the Portal. That's going back to the Excel platform you may have heard of before, so it's right there and ready to go. Next, we have Government, and it's showing the upcoming meetings that we have specifically around the BCC right there, and also other government information and links. And then the last one's Visit. And so, we always have that capability to show, you know, tourism information and also some of the guides that are the most popular that we see people going to over and over again, as well as Events always show up there. In this header here, it's on every page, so they're going to see all this information anywhere they go onto the website. We're going to click into Topics, and we're going to take a look at Home and Property. And inside of Home and Property, you know, what we're doing is we're highlighting information about that specific topic. First, we're highlighting the department information right there. That's what you see on the left. Next, we're looking at popular information that these folks go to, and the third one you see on the right is the most popular services as well. And so, for all those, we're trying to give them a good sense of kind of the information that we're trying to convey to them right away. We'll scroll down for some additional featured items. We also have services and programs here, and so we have this capability kind of to, you know, edit this in a way per topic based on what we see people are interested in, what they're going to, and also what we want them to see. And then the big thing we have here is our ability to filter and search amongst all the content that we have on the website. This is all aggregating information from across all the different content categories we have on the site and from across all the different departments. You'll notice we also have it tagged to different things as far as different topics as well. The whole idea of it is that, you know, we can be able to give people the information in a way that's going to be good for them, you know, they're expecting to be able to see it rather than by department. So, let's scroll back up, look at a typical page. We'll go to Fertilizer and Lanscape Information. This actually is a really popular page as well. For this, you know, folks would usually come here, they'd want to know more info about it, they'd be able to see images and video and stuff like that, but I also want you to notice on the sidebar there, we have Topics, and we also have Departments. And so, those are always available on every single internal page that we have, so they always kind of see, you know, what other pieces of information are tied to this. In this case, we're going to check out the Department, so we'll click on Public Works. And then in Public Works, you know, this page gives you a good overview of how this department actually benefits the public, and so we start out with Accreditation, we start out with, you know, some divisions and things like that, but we highlight their news and their services and their information and resources. And we also now have a consistent way, too, to kind of show the public project information as well. So, you'll see projects there. Let's take a look at Beckett Bridge Replacement Project. It's a mouthful. It's a tongue-twister. And the Beckett Bridge on there, so we created this whole concept of the projects and project features like this so that we could kind of highlight the different projects that are going on across the county and for the public to be able to find out that information on them in a nice intuitive way. We do have that capability on the current website in certain ways, but not in this fashion to kind of lay it out in a way that makes it easier to digest and work with. It's also standardized approach to showing, you know, this info about the projects across the county, which makes it, you know, very valuable. So, the next thing we'll take a look at is a page for our Parks. Like you said, Parks is always in the top five basically for traffic as well, and so for our Parks pages, we're now, you know, providing a kind of a more attractive and useful way to look at these parks. So, we put together this search with amenities on it, so you can be able to choose the different amenities that you, you know, are interested in, and it'll show you what parks are available to that. This is using Google Maps, too, so, you know, clicking on any of those, you can be able to find out more information about it. You can also add this to your own Google Maps if you wanted to, so say, for example, you wanted to go out and get going, that's all you got to do. And then if you scroll down just a little bit, you'll see we have, you know, links directly to those parks as well with more information. And so, that all changes based on, you know, what people are choosing up top as well. And then the last thing we'll take a look at is going to be the BCC page. So, to get to that, just so you know, so we go to Government up top, and then it says Board of County Commissioners there, and you can be able to get to that. This, you know, shows all of your information. It also has links to individual pages as well, and all that content is completely customizable to you. What we've been doing is working with your staff to be able to put that together. That's everything we were going to go through today. There's a couple of things I wanted to highlight, though, you know, like I said, this was shown on a laptop over there. Through the powers of technology, we can't really show you the mobile version or tablet version on here, but all that's already completed and working inside of there as well. Another key thing that we've done is we focused a lot on accessibility, so we paid attention from the get-go when we were designing the site to make sure that things like color contrast for people that would have, you know, colorblindness, things like screen readers would also be essential and be able to be utilized on here. And a large part of what we've been doing, too, is putting together testing around this. So, we're about to start testing with almost 150 users from the public, and a small ratio of them are specifically folks using screen readers as well, so it's going to give us some insight into how they work with those things. And I just want to mention, it's been a Herculean effort. It's been a very big task, like I said, over 4,000 pages that we moved over from the old website to the new website and putting all the branding together, and it's really been a joint effort between, you know, the communications staff, support, department liaisons, and even the department directors, you know, supporting their liaisons to do this. So, I think Sarah and I just owe a big kudos to everyone in their cooperation as we've been putting this all together. We still have, you know, content cleanup to do, we still have testing to do, as I mentioned, but, you know, we're in the home stretch, and I think that's what we're the most excited about. So, thank you so much. Just wanted to show you this a little bit and also answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have questions? Commissioner Long?
Thank you for that presentation. I'm curious about when there might be a backdoor opportunity for us to go in there and look at it. You brought up those slides so quickly. It'd be interesting if we could just, for example, I saw one category, it said Transportation. I'd be very interested in what's behind that. So, do you know? Maybe Barbara does? I don't know. I don't know if you think that would be valuable, but for those of us that serve on quite a few of those different boards, it would be nice to be able to see it.
Yeah, we'll certainly be able to offer a preview link as we're closer to completing the user testing. We just want to make sure that we've got all of our docs in a row with that test, and then we'll be happy to share a link so you can review it closely.
Do you have any idea when that might be?
It's probably going to be another month or so before we're getting to that point.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, thank you. Great work. It looks wonderful. Look forward to it coming online soon. So, just as a way to kind of bridge the county a little bit, are we going to have opportu... I saw you had the Sheriff's, I guess, website on there, so you can go to the Sheriff's website, so Property Appraisers website. All of those will be on there as links. Any thoughts about the city's website so that we're connecting with them? Are they going to be on there as well? So, folks want to talk about like a park, you know, seems like a great way to unite the county, including some of that city information, so.
Yeah, so primarily, what you're going to see on the homepage is driven by end-user, so whatever people are clicking and asking for the most, you're going to see it on the homepage, but there certainly are opportunities we're going to look at in terms of connecting with the municipal PIOs for how do we link back and forth from our websites.
Okay, great. The one, during this time of year, I watch a lot of the Legislature in Session, and they have a button running on the front page about how to watch, and so I didn't see that. I don't know if that was there, and I was, it made me think about, when people watch our meetings or watch the county channel, are they watching, are they going directly to like YouTube and watching it, or are they actually coming through our website and clicking on there? And what's our user activity?
It's actually a combination of both. They're using both. They're going through the website, and they're going through YouTube.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner. I think it looks great. It's a beautiful refresh, and we have so much photography that you'll have your choice of things to load up there, so. Other questions or comments? Looks great.
Thank you.
We're ready for more. Was that it, Barbara?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, item number two, Agenda Review.
All right, as far as the agenda, we have...
All right, as far as the agenda, we have one presentation and one proclamation, an Engineers Week proclamation, and a partner presentation from USF. Then we move on to some public hearings. And our first one, item number three, is from the City of St. Pete. It's a countywide plan map amendment from residential medium and multimodal corridor to residential high, and it's approximately 11 acres out of approximately 14 acres of property located on Sixth Street South and 32nd Avenue South. And that's a proposal from the City of St. Pete. It's the intent of the developer to build multifamily housing on the property. It was formerly a mobile home park, but it's now vacant. It's going to allow higher density residential acres, up to 30 units per acre, and approximately 3.6 acres is located in the coastal high hazard area. The developer has proposed a restrictive covenant, which directs all residential units in the portion of the property outside of the 2016 coastal high hazard area. Ford Pinellas and Partners Advisory Committee have unanimously recommended the approval, and there's no opposition to that item. Item number four, City of Dunedin, countywide map plan amendment from residential low, medium, and preservation to recreation open space and preservation. This is the Gladys Douglas property that I know you're all familiar with. Its two parcels of the amendment area were acquired by the City of Dunedin in May of 2021, with significant assistance from Pinellas County in addition to two others. And no opposition on that one. Number five, and I just want to point out and recognize that we have Felicia Donnelly, the Oldsmar City Manager here in the audience, if you have any questions. This is from City of Oldsmar, again, countywide plan map amendment from Activity Center to Activity Center regarding 38.6 acres, more or less, located in the town center. It is south of Tampa Road and north of State Street East. And the category will remain an Activity Center. The rules require that the amendments to the Activity Center, which increases the highest allowable density or intensity standard filed of record, must be processed as a Tier Two amendment. And there has been some opposition to this item.
And we'll let the county attorney guide us on what we can talk about today, because we've typically not gone into great detail during workshops on these issues, but since Ms. Donnelly is here, I didn't know if she wanted to have a minute to come up and say something, or if you just want to wait till Tuesday.
Hi, good morning, Felicia Donnelly. It's my pleasure.
So, if you would like to, I did bring a presentation, I can bring that presentation next week as well. So it's really up to the Commission and the Chair's pleasure.
Yeah, I think that's probably more appropriate, unless there's urgent questions today, I think that's typically how we do it. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, first of all, great to have you here. Thank you for making yourself available. I think Tuesday would be the perfect spot for that. You did a great presentation, your team did, at the Ford Pinellas, and I think that will be very helpful for all of us to understand what you all are trying to get accomplished there. But again, I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate you on your promotion, your new position, and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, we'll see you Tuesday.
Thank you. So moving on to item number six, and if you have your microphones on, because we're getting a little feedback, this isn't 100% yet, I know they're working on it, so that would be great for feedback.
And the improvement is that the chairman now can turn off all the microphones, so. It was an extra $25,000, but very worth it.
So, item number six is an ordinance update, Chapter 14 of the Pinellas County Code relating to animals, specifically in administrative and nature, definition updates, and regarding the judicial process in Pinellas. A lot of the items had to do with the judicial requesting some of these. And this is not related to the pet stores. That is something that we are continuing to work on, and we'll bring that to you in a couple of months, back to the board. And Doug is here, if you do have any questions. We did send out a memo recently, trying to break down some of the answers you may have, and if you want to meet one-on-one, that's great, we can do that too, even before next Tuesday, if you'd like.
You all should have received the memo, pretty straightforward, but if anyone has questions for Doug today, we can do that. Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Lordis. My question is, do you know now when the public hearing on this part of the issue will be?
It's on Tuesday, the first one, for this. Did you mean the pet stores?
Yeah.
We're planning in the next couple of months, the team's finishing up doing some research, and we're also waiting on one of the bills to see what happens with that out of Tallahassee, but we're really close to ready, to be honest with you.
And is there any update on where we are with that? I don't know, is Brian here? I can't see behind the pole. Oh, do we know where that bill is in the legislature?
Sure. Doug, you want to come up? I know you have information on both those bills.
I'm just curious, because we have so many people interested in this issue. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Doug Brightwell, Director for Animal Services. There's a couple of bills at the state level. There's one bill that was trying to ban pet store sales throughout the state. That bill is pretty much dead or getting no movement in any of the committee meetings. There's a different set of bills titled the Pet Protection Act, which would not allow counties and jurisdictions to ban pet stores. The name is contradictory to the content of the bill. It has gotten, a lot of, it's moved through most of its committee hearings on the Senate side, it has not gotten through all the committees on the House side yet, so we're not sure. We're still waiting to see how the movement goes on the pet protection bills. And that's obviously going to factor into where we land as well.
Okay, great, moving on to item number seven, Citizens to Be Heard. Then we have our Consentage item, Clerk of the Court vouchers and bills. Moving on to a regular agenda item, number nine, Housing and Community Development. This is an Affordable Housing Project Funding Recommendation for Seminole Square with apartments by Archway Partners, which is located in Largo. And we are recommending conditional approval of affordable housing funding for this project, and further recommending that the county administrator be authorized to negotiate and approve terms, conditions, and the final funding amount not to exceed the Board of County Commissioners' approval amount. It is for 96 units, again, in Largo, and total cost is 27 million. We have some funding, as well as some other partners. Item number 10, also Affordable Housing Project Funding Recommendation for Blue Dolphin Tower by Blue Sky Communities. It's located at 610 Franklin Street in Clearwater. And again, just like the previous one, it's further recommended that the county administrator be authorized to negotiate and approve the final terms. It's 2 million for the land, 1 million from the state, 1 million from the penny. Any questions?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just go back for that one for one second? For the Pinellas funding, it's 2 million, or is it 1 million? Or 1 million a penny and 1 million from the state? Okay, I see that now.
Yes, it's 1 each.
Okay, thank you.
2 million for the land. Number 11, Award to Bid to Sun Coast Development of Pinellas County, Inc., for fiscal years '22 through '24. It's for the Countywide Americans with Disability Act for sidewalks and work order sidewalk drainage and roadway improvements, also helping with our drainage and resurfacing project. And that's 19.5 million, it's a two-year project. And something of note, it's an SBE, so that's a positive.
Chair.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you for talking about this particular issue, Lordis. I have a question, it's probably appropriate for, I think I saw her, oh yeah.
Kelly?
For Kelly.
Come on up, Kelly.
If you don't mind. So every time I think of sidewalks, Ms. Kelly, I think about you and some of the conversations that you've had from the dais up there about the deplorable condition of our sidewalks countywide. So since we have such a big focus on that this year, my question is, what's the condition of our roads as it relates to maintenance and ongoing projects that we had scheduled some time ago when I first came on the Commission, and I've lost track of where they all are? Is there any way you can give us an update, or can we ask for that? Maybe she can come back with it? I don't know, whatever, it's your pleasure.
Yes, Ms. Kelly Levy, Public Works Director. Yes, Barry actually gave me a task, you know, late last year to develop kind of a similar study, looking at our pavement, as we did with our sidewalks, and look at various strategies to address the deteriorating road conditions. And we have completed that, I'm meeting with Barry next week. So, after that, I think, you know, we will have some direction on next steps to bring that information to you, and I think Barry can follow up with you if you'd like, or again, I'll be meeting with him next week to go over the pavement.
Well, I know he's a little under the weather at the moment, however, I do think, Mr. Chair, that this conversation works in a synergistic way with the big picture piece that I spoke about at our last Commission meeting. Hopefully, you will agree, Kelly, because the focus is always on where do we find the money to get all of this done? But especially given the tranche of dollars coming from the federal level that we potentially would be able to qualify for, I worry about the local match that would be required, and what we're doing about being prepared for that. So I look forward to that conversation very much, and hope it can be sooner rather than later, Mr. Chair, please. Thank you.
I know it's on his list of things to talk to us about coming up, so. Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Kelly. Since you're up, I was just wondering if you would mind kind of giving us something on the boats, Barry kind of gave me an update on what's going on, and I thought everybody else was.
On derelict vessels?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes, thank you, Commissioner Peters, I appreciate you and Rep. Cheney, you have really helped us move the needle. I really appreciate your leadership. So, yeah, we've, the derelict vessels obviously have always, have been a challenge for quite some time, but in the last two years, it literally has become almost like a boat junkyard in certain areas of our waterways, and very challenging to get them removed. We have had some very, very productive conversations with the sheriff, and they have kind of changed their practices and procedures around derelict vessel removal, and are taking a leadership role in removing, I think, the first almost couple dozen to get them, kind of get the backlog going. They have changed to a more administrative process versus adjudicating these cases, so it will help us remove these vessels in a more timely manner. After they kind of help us get those backlogged vessels out of the water, again, you know, Barry has asked me to look at our process and how we can streamline it as much as we can to, once the sheriff gives us the go to remove a vessel, it's been through the investigatory process, then we can remove it in a more timely manner. Right now, you know, with this change in the legislature implemented, those funds don't come directly to us, so we have to then go and apply for it, and that's kind of created a couple of months lag in our ability to get boats out of the water. So, we're looking at internally, and how we can do better to try to shorten that period of time, and we'll bring that back to Barry here shortly. But there is that process that we now have to go through that we didn't have to before at the state level that we really don't have control over.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I guess Barry's on the other side, and he's been up on shore for a really long time, so I really appreciate you taking the time to look at this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seale?
While you're here, what's the latest on John's Pass?
So we had a very good meeting with Army Corps staff, I think it was Tuesday afternoon, I'm sorry, my calendar. Yeah, I think it was Tuesday afternoon. The subject of that conversation was the upcoming nourishment on Treasure Island and Long Key, and sand sources were discussed as part of those projects, and what the likely sand sources will be. The primary sand sources for those projects are John's Pass, including the channel west of the bridge, as well as the large ebb shoal that accumulates offshore, that is their permitted, the Army Corps permitted borrow area, Blind Pass and Passagirl Pass. So all three of those passes will be dredged out as part of those projects, though they're scheduled for fiscal year '23. The Army Corps is waiting for, those dollars were appropriated, but they haven't been moved into their budget yet, so they are waiting for that budget amendment process, and they're ready to go. As far as the area on the north side of the pass, we are collecting some cores over the next couple of months to determine compatibility of use that might help move that project, you know, in different ways. You know, the city had initially considered hauling the material off, that can be incredibly expensive, whereas if there's a beneficial reuse in the immediate area, then we may be able to find a different route to go. Rep. Cheney did submit for an appropriation, and I believe Brian provided an update on that, it is kind of moving through the process at the state legislature as far as funding to help with that project.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Kelly, for that update. I'm curious about how much more that beach area has grown. And in particular, the more that beach area expands out into the canal, the more treacherous it is for our citizens, and are we doing anything, or is that the city's responsibility? I can't help but think about liability. The last time I was down there, excuse me for interrupting you, the last time I was down there, it was just swarming with families with little kids.
Yes, we do routine monitoring of all beaches in Pinellas County through the University of South Florida, and these last several winter storms that have come through have not only moved a lot of sand into that pass, it's also caused tremendous erosion on some of our beaches, that, you know, erosion that we haven't seen in quite some time. So, we have communicated that, we are sending, we are going to be sending that data up to the Corps so that they can kind of take a look at, especially the erosion side of things, but how they're going to be using that pass for a sand source. The difference here is that the Corps' responsibility is that main channel, so that's the center span of the bridge. The areas where the sand is accumulating is outside of those areas, and it's not really part of their purview, and really kind of outside of projects that they typically do. A year ago, when we started seeing, you know, maybe there, I think it was in the news where a child or a family had experienced a rip current and gotten caught up in it, we encouraged the property owners there to put up signage, asking people to stay off of there. That sand that is sticking out is either in ownership of the upland property owner, the private property owner, DOT in the right-of-way of the bridge area, and then the city on the other side. So, we did recommend that they put up safety signs, but to your point, when the University of South Florida was out there doing their surveys, there were people waiting across from the rocks to the first bridge abutment, like playing out there.
I've seen them do that, and I've seen them do that with little kids on their back.
Yes.
I mean, that is just dumb.
Yeah, we have, our University of South Florida took some pictures of it because they were concerned about what the folks were doing, but that is not, you know, we don't regulate, it's really within the city of Madeira Beach, and we encourage them, again, to, you know, take some steps to... to, you know, take some steps to encourage people not to do that.
I think it might be timely, just because it won't be long before the weather will start heating up. There'll be more people out there, more tourists, and it's just an accident waiting to happen. Thank you.
Anything else for Kelly while she's here? Do you have something about the Rays stadium?
No idea.
I have, I have one more thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Flowers.
Commissioner Long?
How about the Grand Canal? Is there anything, update that we need to know about that?
I, I, we do have some positive movement. I will leave it at that. I don't want to make any public announcements at this point in time, but we do have some really positive movement, not just, you know, there's the funding side of thing. Rep. Cheney is moving a bill through to kind of help with the, a portion of that project, but there's also some, again, behind-the-scenes coordination that we're doing with the state and the Army Corps of Engineers that may pan out to be far more beneficial than, than funding.
Excellent. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much. All right.
Okay, item number 12 is a cooperative funding agreement with the Southwest Florida Water Management District for the Curlew Creek and Smith Bayou Watersheds. It's a feasibility study. The agreement provides $361,000 in cooperative funding, as well as a match from the county for $361,000, for a total project of $722,000. Part of it's penny, and it's in the six-year plan for the penny. Also a Kelly item. Item number 13, utilities. It's a change order number two, the final one, with TLC diversified for construction of the Highland Lakes area air release valve replacement. The purpose of the project is to replace existing release valves below grade manholes and the insulation of above-grade air release valve assemblies at six sites. It, it does increase the contract by $226,000, and that's due to the difference between the original estimate and the final quantities. It's a total of $1.2 million. Okay, then we have county attorney.
Under item number 14, this is a confidential settlement matter, which I will contact each of you in advance of Tuesday's meeting to discuss. If any of you have an opportunity to stick around for a few minutes after this meeting, I can certainly talk with you about that as well. One other thing I just wanted to go ahead and report to you is, in relation to, to a lot of the conversations that we've had about the opioid litigation and some of the settlements that you've most likely read about occurring around the country, last month, our Attorney General here in the state of Florida settled with Endo Health Solutions in the amount of $65 million. That's not absolutely finalized yet, but that settlement will become part of the Florida Plan, which we have signed on to by some of the actions that you all voted to take last calendar year. Again, not finalized yet, but the point of me bringing this to your attention is that $65 million that the Florida Attorney General will be getting through this settlement with Endo will flow through the Florida Plan, and by virtue of Pinellas County being a part of that plan, we will be eligible to receive some of those funds in accordance with the provisions that are in that plan. If you all recall, there are certain funds that will come directly to Pinellas County, but then there are also funds that will be made available through the regional pots of money, so this $65 million will become part of that. So, just good news, I guess, in the, the settlement in that regard.
Okay, then on to county administrator report, and Barry's going to do the accomplishments report at that time, and then on to county commission, new business.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone bringing new business for Tuesday? Commissioner Seal?
Maybe not new business, but at some point, I was at the mayor's council yesterday, and a few items came up, and one being, where are we on the building amplifiers for the radios, you know, the condo issue? So, I'm not sure what's going on with that, but would like to get an update of that. And then I put, we're putting it through CAPS, but the, and it was in yesterday's newspaper, but the Largo has stepped up with a plate, with a very aggressive foreclosure program, which has really benefited a lot of very marginal properties, and I just was wondering if we could look at the same thing. St. Pete has, too. They were just featured in Florida Trend. Thanks.
Anyone else? Just as a, nothing really earth-shattering, but we did sit down with Mayor Welch and the Rays yesterday, and it was no real developments, just kind of a reset. After the Major League Baseball has rejected their split-city plan, the Rays requested a meeting, and so we had just to sit down to kind of reset the stage, and we plan to meet more frequently than I think all of us have met in the past, so I'm sure Barry will brief you one on, during your one-on-ones, as far as any more detail than that. And then this morning, I sent you a copy of language that was sent to me, just so you have it. It's language that was given to the supervisor elections office for a individual or group that is going to be collecting petitions for the issue of term limits, but the language I sent to you, so you can take a look at it for your review. Anything else? All right, we are adjourned. Have a great day.